Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June 28th, 2021 City Council Meeting. I'll now call the meeting to order. Please note that this meeting is being attended by City Council and staff via Zoom teleconference. Thank you for your patience as we continue to navigate city business through this meeting process. For the benefit of the public and as required by the Brown Act, the vote will be by roll call. City Clerk, would you please state the role?
Mayor Kalmak.
Here.
Mayor Protenver Papa.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Sestarsik.
Here.
Councilmember Masalava.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Now, by motion of the City Council, this is the time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda and/or rearrange the order of the agenda. Does anyone wish to pull a consent calendar item? All right, City Clerk, do we have any supplemental communications this evening?
Yes, seven supplemental communications were received. They've been distributed to council and made available to the public on the city's website.
Okay, thank you. So now call for a motion and a second for the consent calendar for the items not pulled.
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, may we have a roll call vote?
Mayor Kalmak, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protenver Papa, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Sestarsik, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Masalava, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. That passes five oh. Now it's time for presentations and recognitions. So I'll call upon Chief Phil Gonchar for the COVID-19 local emergency review and a couple of other items. Chief.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening to you, the rest of City Council, City Manager Ingram, City Staff, and all others listening and watching in tonight. Next slide, please, for me Dana. Thank you very much. As it stands today, California, we have a total case count of 3,714,051 confirmed COVID-19 cases with 62,994 deaths as a result. This is an increase of over 1,232 deaths in the state since our last meeting. As you all know, on June 15th, there was a statewide reopening by Governor Newsom. With that, the Orange County-specific COVID-19 numbers equal the following. We have a total of 256,052 cases and 5,100 deaths, excuse me, 5,118 deaths. The breakdown of deaths by age R1 under the age of 18, 8 aged 18 to 24, 59 aged 25 to 34, 116 aged 35 to 44, 1,058 aged 45 to 64, 3,876 are aged 65 and over. The gender difference is males with 2,924 deaths, females with 2,158, and other and unknown genders with 36 deaths. Our Orange County hospitals have 51 cases hospitalized, 11 of which are in the, excuse me, within the ICU. As of today, Orange County has reported 25.2% ICU bed availability. Again, these are adult beds only. Next, some bordering municipality data. City of Long Beach has 53,612 cases with 945 deaths. That was last updated on Friday, June 25th. The city of Huntington Beach has 10,937 cases. Cypress now at 2,976. The city of Los Alamos with 1,133. City of Garden Grove with 16,718. Rossmore with 130, and Westminster at 7,200 cases. Here in Seal Beach, we now have 1,154 confirmed cases. So unfortunately, I must report to you that we are now at a total of 86 deaths here in Seal Beach. With that, 42 of them can be directly attributed to the skilled nursing facility cases. 14 can be attributed to the adult living facility cases, and 30 are actual Seal Beach residents. Based on the way that the state and county are reporting these 1,154 Seal Beach COVID-19 cases, 938 of them appear to be actual Seal Beach residents, where the remaining can be directly attributed to the Seal Beach Health and Rehab Skilled Nursing Facility outbreaks. With that, we still receive a daily report from our skilled nursing and assisted living facilities. I'm happy to report that both of those facilities have zero patients currently in isolation. Next, I want to take a moment to discuss the death rates. Overall, the death rates for those who have been diagnosed with COVID-19 are as follows. Nationally, 1.8%, State of California with 1.7%, Orange County with 2%. Here in Seal Beach specifically, 3.2% without non-skilled nursing facility cases, and 7.5% if you include those skilled cases. Next slide, please Dana. As most of you see before you, the Orange County Fire Authority calls for service involving infectious diseases from May 27th to June 13th. Total 794. Seal Beach made up about 2.3% of all those calls for service with a total of 18. Of these calls in Seal Beach, one infectious call came from Seal Beach Health and Rehab with one transport. One infectious call came from Sunrise Living Facility with one transport, and nine infectious calls came from Leisure World resulting in eight transports. Next slide, please Dana. As most of you are aware, we've been asked by several residents to present the updated COVID-19 Los Alamos Unified School District graph listed before you all, and as well on losal.org's website. In front of you tonight, as you can see, school's been out since, I think that this, actually, school's been out for a couple of weeks, but this website data is updated last on June 16th, 2021. And of course, since that last day of school occurred, there's been zero staff and zero student cases being reported with COVID-19. Next slide Dana. Moving on to vaccine distribution. Next slide, one more. The vaccine distribution for COVID-19 is widely available now in Orange County. That's to people who are aged 12 and older now. Further, the Orange County Healthcare Agency updates its vaccine data weekly on Thursdays, and as of then, there has now been 1,734,537 people who have been fully vaccinated per the county. Next one, or excuse me, next slide Dana. I wanted to touch a little bit on the Delta variant, as this becomes quite highlighted in the news lately. The California Department of Health is tracking variants as they emerge and spread, including obviously the most recently discussed Delta variant, which has now been upgraded to a variant of concern. Eligible individuals who have not yet been vaccinated are highly encouraged to do so as soon as possible to avoid contracting the virus and to help prevent future mutations. According to the California Department of Public Health, the Delta was first found in India and could be twice as infectious for the unvaccinated. With that, if you are vaccinated, 96% of us are protected against having to be hospitalized if we do receive this variant. States with the lower vaccination rate, excuse me, states with the lower vaccination rates are expected to be hit harder. For example, Alabama, Arkansas, Louisiana, Mississippi, and Wyoming specifically. Next slide, please Dana. Before we finish this evening, I'd like to remind all of you listening and watching in tonight to know that barring any other severe outbreaks, this presentation will be our last COVID update for the foreseeable future. Lastly, I would encourage everyone to stay informed about the most up-to-date COVID news through the various listed government websites on this slide. For up-to-date information specifically here in the city of Seal Beach, I'd encourage you to visit sealbeachca.gov and then hit the COVID link, which will give you a bunch of information as well. Next slide, please Dana. As always, I'm available for any questions, and I've appreciated the opportunity to present this information to all of you for the past 16 months. And with that, I have nothing more. Mayor Kalmak, back to you.
Thank you, Chief. Now I'll ask for you again to talk about and see swearing in of our new police officers.
Fantastic. And while Dana uploads a few things, I'd like to first thank you, Mayor Kalmak, City Council, City Manager Ingram, for providing us the opportunity to bring about all the phenomenal, phenomenal new hires and promotions that we've had over the past 18 months. With that, while she loads that information, I'd like to pass it on to Lieutenant Nicholas, who's been working diligently with another one of our newer hires, Officer David Railbrook, on creating not just this PowerPoint, but a wonderful video that was done in partnership with our wonderful City Clerk, who has worked extremely hard to get this done with our staff as well, Gloria Harper. So with that, Lieutenant Nicholas is going to actually take over my seat and speak to you all here next. Lieutenant Nicholas.
Good evening. Thank you, Chief, and good evening, Mayor Kalmak, City Council, City Manager Ingram, City Staff, and those watching at home. I'm happy to present a little bit about some of our wonderful new hires and some recent promotions that we've done in the past 18 months. Dana, next slide, please. First up is Police Aid Thomas Blackledge. Police Aid Blackledge started with the Seal Beach Police Department in 2016 as a police explorer, and he was promoted to Explorer Sergeant in 2018. In August of 2020, Thomas was hired as a police aide in the Traffic Division. He is currently attending Golden West College, pursuing a degree in social and behavioral science, with plans to transfer to Cal State Long Beach to complete a bachelor's degree in social and behavioral sciences. In his free time, he enjoys spending time with his family, visiting the beach, and competing in go-kart racing. He's very appreciative of the opportunities the Seal Beach Police Department has given him and looks forward to furthering his career and learning with the city. Next slide, please. Police Aid Spencer Contreras. Spencer is a Seal Beach local through and through. She graduated from the Los Alamos High School. In 2016, she was crowned Miss Seal Beach, and later went on to compete for Miss California. Spencer did a lot of events for the city of Seal Beach. She helped with the Lions Club Fish Fry, Car Show, Chili Cook Off, and Christmas Tree Lighting, networking with new businesses, create Christmas parade staff, and she also organized and worked with the Band on the Sand event. In 2019, she became a volunteer for the Seal Beach Police Department. Spencer looks at the work she does for the police department as a career choice and not just a job. She's willing and open to look at all the opportunities to further her career in the department. Her goal is to have a full-time career in policing in some capacity. She lives with her husband Nathan in Orange County, and she enjoys working out, traveling, being with family, hiking, and the little things in life. Spencer knows her grandfather, a retired Santa Ana police officer, is proud of what she has accomplished and is watching over her. Next slide, please. Next up is Lauren Berich. She's the Executive Assistant to the Chief of Police. Lauren was born and raised in Orange County and is passionate about public service and ensuring the government is working for the people in an accessible, efficient, and equitable manner. After graduating from Penn State with a degree in political science, she moved to Washington DC to fulfill her dream of working on Capitol Hill, and she was able to work both in the US House of Representatives and the US Senate. After working on campaigns in Colorado and DC, Lauren moved back to Southern California to be close to family and worked as a project manager at a small business. Lauren was most recently the Special Projects Director and Field Representative in a local congressional office, where she managed a portfolio of policy-issue areas, organized and executed events, and worked with federal agencies on behalf of constituents to complete casework. Lauren is excited to remain in public service in her role as the Executive Assistant to the Chief. As a member of the Quality of Life Team, she is eager to continue working to address homelessness, substance use disorder, and mental health matters to serve our community and keep residents safe. In her spare time, Lauren enjoys roller skating, spending time in the water, and searching for vintage clothing and antiques. She's looking forward to traveling again with her friends and family, hopefully sometime soon. Next slide, please. Police civilian investigator Anya Eisenhower. Anya grew up locally and obtained her bachelor's degree in criminal justice from the California State University Long Beach with a minor's in forensic studies and communication. She began working at the Seal Beach Police Department in 2009 and has served as an intern, police aide, senior community services officer, and for over two and a half years also served as the acting executive assistant to the chief in tandem with her regular duties. She's also currently serves as a member of the Serious Traffic Accident Response Team and is a member of the department's peer support team. She resides locally with her husband, two children, and two dogs. In her free time, she enjoys spending time with her family and friends, gardening, and drinking lots of coffee. She is very excited for her new role, which has been a career goal since she first began with the department. Next slide. Senior Community Services Officer Kevin Castellanos. Kevin Castellanos attended California State University Long Beach and earned a Bachelor of Science in Criminology and Criminal Justice. While in his senior year, he worked as an intern at the Seal Beach Police Department, and upon graduation, received a part-time position of police aide assigned to the Traffic Bureau. After working part-time for three years, in January of 2021, he received a full-time position of Senior Community Services Officer. Kevin is the youngest of seven children and spends much of his free time with his family, including his 12 nieces and nephews. When he's not with his family, he's also often found with, found with his friends hiking, camping, or playing board games. Next slide, please. Management Analyst Kevin Edwards. Kevin is the management analyst with the Seal Beach Police Department. He has been with the city of Seal Beach for over 10 years. During that time, he has worked as a crime analyst, drone operator, GIS designer, database engineer, and IT coordinator. He currently lives in South Orange County with his loving wife Cassandra, his son Easton, and his adorable daughter Harper. Kevin has a deep love of technology and spends his free time 3D designing, building custom computers, tinkering with servers, and playing video games. Next, please. Next up is Police Officer Hector Mercado. In 2015, Officer Mercado began his career as a police officer with the Bell Police Department, where he served for three years before moving to the Cypress Police Department. During his time at the Cypress Police Department, he spent his last two years assigned to the Traffic Safety Bureau as a motor officer. He currently resides in the city of Chino Hills with his wife Jessica and two children. He and his wife spend most of their time keeping their oldest son active with sports, karate, and guitar lessons. They enjoy exploring new places and taking family vacations. Some of his hobbies include working out, collecting antique signs, and riding his mountain bike. Next slide, please. This is Police Officer David Railbrook. Officer Railbrook has been a police officer since May of 2019. He grew up both in Los Alamos and Seal Beach, having attended the Los Alamos High School. He went on to Cal State Long Beach, where he graduated with a bachelor's degree in business, and Rio Hondo College, where he received an associate's degree in fire technology. Officer Railbrook and his wife currently reside in Long Beach with their two pit bull rescues and their very recently newborn daughter. Prior to becoming a police officer, David owned and operated two CrossFit gyms in Los Alamos and Long Beach. Health, fitness, and training have always been an important part of his life. If he is not surfing or snowboarding, he is outdoors camping with his wife. Officer Railbrook graduated from the Orange County Sheriff's Academy as the top recruit in his class. He started his career with the Los Alamos Police Department, serving in patrol as a homeless liaison officer and as a member of the Serious Traffic Accident Response Team. Officer Railbrook feels blessed to have been selected as a police officer with the Seal Beach Police Department and is currently assigned to patrol as well as a member of our Quality of Life Team. Next slide, please. Motor Officer Eduardo Pastor joined the Seal Beach Police Department very recently. After proudly serving in the United States Navy, Officer Pastor attended the Golden West Police Academy as a self-sponsored recruit in 2004. Officer Pastor began his law enforcement career with the City of La Palma Police Department in 2005. He worked with the La Palma Police Department for 11 years before joining the Cypress Police Department in 2016. During his time with La Palma and Cypress, Officer Pastor held various assignments, including field training officer, explorer advisor, motor officer, Serious Traffic Accident Response Team member. He was part of the North County SWAT team, a West County SWAT team, and a motor instructor. When off-duty, Officer Pastor enjoys camping and spending time with his family. Next slide, please. Next up is Corporal Jeff Gibson. Jeff Gibson has been a police officer for 18 years and joined the Seal Beach Police Department in 2008. He is currently appointed to the Patrol Division as a corporal. Throughout his career, Corporal Gibson has worked a variety of assignments, including detectives, motor officer, field training officer, star team member, beach patrol, and explorer advisor. Jeff is currently finishing his bachelor's degree in public safety and was awarded Police Officer of the Year in 2016, and then again in 2018. In his spare time, Jeff enjoys spending time with his family, riding motorcycles, and surfing. Next, please. This is Corporal Pete Crock. Corporal Crock began his career as a police dispatcher in 2004. In 2008, he resigned that position to join the Police Academy and to become an officer in 2009. During his time at Seal Beach, Corporal Crock has served as a field training officer, a detective, a SWAT team member, a member of the DEA Task Force, and the DEA High-Risk Operations Team. He's a firearms instructor and a patrol officer. He has a passion for learning and sharing this training with his colleagues. Next slide, please. Next up is Emergency Services Coordinator Sergeant Brian Gray. Brian Gray has been a police officer for a total of 16 years, 11 of which he worked for the city of Seal Beach. He is currently assigned to the Support Services Division as the Emergency Services Coordinator. He coordinates emergency, emergency management, disaster preparedness, and the management of the various volunteer programs, including our Volunteers in Policing Service, Community Emergency Response Team, Radio Amateur Civil Emergency Service, and Neighbor for Neighbor. When he is not on patrol, he looks to work on projects that lower crime and improve the quality of life for our residents and visitors of the city. Outside of work, you may find Sergeant Gray at the dog park with his pups scruffing diesel or running. Next slide, please. Sergeant Henry has served the city of Seal Beach as a member of the Honor Guard, Special Enforcement Team, and Peer Support Team. He has served as a school resource officer, field training officer, and held the rank of corporal, and is currently working as a patrol watch commander. Eric is a lateral from the Orange County Sheriff's Department, where he served for 28 years and retired as a patrol sergeant. He loves the city of Seal Beach and is proud to serve here. Eric enjoys spending time with his family and his classic cars. Next, please. This is Sergeant Jordan Marackin. Sergeant Marackin is currently assigned to the Patrol Bureau, but also oversees the Traffic Division. Sergeant Marackin began his law enforcement career in San Diego in 1998. He has worked in a number of assignments, including community-oriented policing, field training, and investigations. In 2017, he was hired by the Seal Beach Police Department and has helped revamp the department's social media team. Sergeant Marackin holds a bachelor's degree in criminal justice and is currently working toward his master's degree in public administration. A graduate of Los Alamos High School, Sergeant Marackin is excited for this new chapter in his career and the place that he has always affectionately called home. Next slide, please. I'm very happy to introduce my partner. This is Lieutenant Julia Klasby. Lieutenant Klasby has been a police officer for 13 years and joined the Seal Beach PD in 2014. She graduated from UC Santa Cruz in 2004 with a bachelor's degree in business management economics. During her tenure at Seal Beach PD, she has served as a field training officer, drug recognition expert, explorer advisor, honor guard member, and emergency services coordinator. In 2018, she graduated from Cal State Long Beach with a master's degree in emergency services administration. Julia authored the City of Seal Beach's evacuation plan, adopted as an annex to our city's emergency operations plan as her master's thesis project. Lieutenant Klasby currently serves as the Support Services Bureau Lieutenant. Her husband Brian has been a police officer for 16 years and works for the city of Garden Grove. They have a daughter Caroline, age 5, a son Colton, age 3, and a daughter Catherine, just aged 11 months. Julie is an avid cyclist, a die-hard Laker fan, and enjoys attending country music concerts with her family.
All right, up next, we have Lieutenant Nick Nicholas, who I will be presenting for. Lieutenant Nicholas didn't want to present himself because it was a little bit weird. So with that, Lieutenant Nicholas has been with the Seal Beach Police Department since 2010. He loves sports, is currently assigned as the Operations Bureau Lieutenant and Public Information Officer. Prior to his current assignment, Lieutenant Nicholas was the department's narcotics detective. Lieutenant Nicholas has also worked as a patrol watch commander, field training officer, terrorism liaison officer, explorer post-advisor, homeless liaison officer, and beach/bike patrol officer, community-oriented policing team. He is recognized by the International Association of Chiefs of Police as a drug recognition expert and is a licensed emergency medical technician. Lieutenant Nicholas was the recipient of the Mothers Against Drug Driving Century Award for arresting 113 impaired drivers in one calendar year. In his spare time, Lieutenant Nicholas enjoys going to concerts, playing guitar, and teaching at Fullerton College for drug recognition. Up next, we've got Captain Michael Ezrow.
Thank you, Chief. I couldn't have said that better myself. Next up, Captain Michael Ezrow. He's been a police officer for 21 years and joined the Seal Beach Police Department in 2005. He's also worked various assignments, including patrol, SWAT, field training officer, bike patrol, explorer advisor, emergency services coordinator, and investigations. He holds a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Cal State Long Beach, and he loves running and spending time with his family. Next, please. And last, but certainly not least, is Captain Michael Henderson. Captain Henderson has over 30 years of law enforcement experience, having come to Seal Beach Police Department from the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department in 2006. During his time at Seal Beach PD, Captain Henderson has worked a variety of assignments, including patrol sergeant, corporal, SWAT team member, explorer advisor, emergency services coordinator, public information officer, and homeless liaison officer. Captain Henderson has a bachelor's degree from Cal State Long Beach and a master's degree in homeland security studies. He is also a graduate of the Los Angeles Police Department Leadership Program and the Post-Executive Development Course. He has twice received the department's lifesaving medal. He currently oversees the Operations Bureau. And that concludes our brief presentation, and then we will show you a short video that we created with the assistance of our wonderful City Clerk Gloria Harper administering the oath of office to all of these new appointees.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilmembers, City Manager, colleagues, families, and members of the public. It is my privilege and honor to swear in the new police officers for the city of Seal Beach. With that, would you please raise your right hand? I state your name, please.
I, Michael Henderson.
I, Michael Henderson.
I, Michael Ezrow.
I, Nick Nicholas.
I, Julia Klasby.
I, Nick Nicholas.
I, Pete Crock.
I, Brian Gray.
I, Eric Henry.
I, Hector Mercado.
I, David Railbrook.
I, Jeff Gibson.
I, Jordan Marackin.
I, Bruno Baldurama.
I, Eduardo Pastor.
I, Anya Eisenhower.
I, Lauren Berich.
I, Spencer Contreras.
I, Kevin Castellanos.
I, Kevin Edwards.
I, Kevin Castellanos.
I, Thomas Blackledge.
Soros. Good.
Yes, speak. Yes, good girl.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
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 That I will support and defend.
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 The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance. That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation. Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
That I will well and faithfully discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
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 Of which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations. 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 Thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Dana, and I want to especially thank City Clerk Gloria Harper for her time and assistance with this project. If you don't have any questions, I'm happy to turn it back to you, Mayor Kalmak.
Thank you very much. Our next item is a recognition of Motor Officer Corey Montgomery. So Chief Gonchar, to you or Nick.
All right, this is the last of our presentations. I know it's been a PD-heavy presentation night, so thank you for that, Mayor.
I'd like to just take a quick moment to recognize our newest motor officer, Corey Montgomery. We have to do this virtually, so unfortunately, he wasn't able to get his award from MAD yet. But once he gets it, he'll be very proud to hang that hopefully in his home office or work office, whatever it may be. Nonetheless, last week Officer Montgomery was honored by Mothers Against Drunk Driving, or MAD, at their virtual law enforcement recognition ceremony. As you may know, the mission of MAD is to end drunk driving, help fight drugged driving, support the victims of these violent crimes, and prevent underage drinking. With that, Officer Montgomery was the top DUI arresting officer for the entire Seal Beach Police Department last year with thirty-five arrests. As you can tell, we are all very proud of Officer Montgomery's work in keeping our community safe. And with that, congratulations, Corey. Unless there's any questions, back to you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Chief. Next item, we have a presentation by US Navy Lieutenant Josiah Hauck on the Naval Weapons Station Concurrent Legislative Jurisdiction Request. Lieutenant?
Yes, good evening, Mayor Kalmy, City Council members and staff, and everyone else in attendance. My name is Lieutenant Josiah Hauck. I'm a judge advocate, working for the US Navy, and I provide legal advice to the commanding officer of Naval Weapons Station Seal Beach. The purpose of this presentation is to request a letter of concurrence from the city of Seal Beach with respect to a pending shift in jurisdiction at the installation from proprietary to concurrent. Next slide, please. Oh, and I did want to also mention, also on the line with me, on behalf of the Navy, from the offices of Commander Navy Region Southwest in San Diego, are Ms. Elizabeth Piatanza and Mr. Matt Cruz. So if there are any questions at the end, they may be jumping in to help me respond to those. So just a very brief bit of background here. There's an effort navy-wide across the United States to shift the jurisdictional status of the installations, the Navy bases, to concurrent. So there's different types of jurisdiction, as I'm sure many on the call are well aware, ranging from exclusive, in which the federal government has essentially the exclusive right to criminal law enforcement and other types of jurisdiction on its own property, all the way down to proprietary, in which the local law enforcement retains almost all of those rights, even though the land is owned by the Department of the Navy. So in the case of the city of Seal Beach, or excuse me, the Naval Weapons Station Seal Beach, the land is owned by the Department of the Navy, but the local law enforcement is what provides almost all law enforcement response on the base. So the shift from proprietary to concurrent, what exactly would that involve? Essentially, it would open the door to additional jurisdiction being imposed by the Department of the Navy via the US Attorney's Office and for certain certain types of crimes that maybe couldn't be effectively prosecuted on the state side. It would allow federal prosecution of those crimes. It would also allow naval security forces to issue citations on base, which could set up a future federal prosecution. So that's the overall goal. It's essentially an effort to expand the jurisdictional opportunities for prosecution and for law enforcement. The current status of the installation is that any law enforcement that relates to state crimes has to be executed by the city of Seal Beach. And so, to a large extent, the installation is not able to enforce many law enforcement actions on its own installation. And so this would expand the installation's ability to do that. So the action requested from the city of Seal Beach is to provide a statement of concurrence that the city supports this effort. And I provided a template that we've been sending to a number of local entities that expresses that support. We've worked with the police department and had some other discussions about this. But again, of course, available for any questions. The legal authority to do this will ultimately rest with the state of California, and it's codified in California Government Code Section 126. That basically allows the state of California to cede to concurrent jurisdiction. So as opposed to exercising the rights and jurisdictional powers that we just talked about, it would not lose, the locals would not lose any ability to exercise those powers. It would simply grant the federal government to exercise those powers as well. Impacts on existing law enforcement responses. Essentially, the practical impact would be there would be no change in the existing memorandum of understanding between the installation and Seal Beach Police Department. If there was a desire to change that in response to the fact that the legislation or the jurisdiction had changed, that would be something that would have to be worked out between the Seal Beach PD and the installation. But there would be no change, just based on the fact that the jurisdiction had shifted. If anything, this may result in potential cost savings to the city of Seal Beach due to the Navy being able to enforce more or to provide more law enforcement support on its own installation and possibly not rely so much on the city of Seal Beach. In terms of the process here, what the letter of concurrence would be used for, ultimately, this will, we've requested letters from a number of different local entities, including the US Attorney's Office for the Central District. They provide a concurrence, the Orange County, or the County of Orange, rather. And those will all be packaged together and sent to the Principal Deputy Assistant Secretary of the Navy for Environment, Installations, and Energy. And that will then be sent to the state of California as one package that will be considered by the state of California as to whether to cede jurisdiction and assent to this process. So that's the overall goal here. The request is just a letter on a City of Seal Beach letterhead essentially that says, "We support this initiative." And absent any questions, that is all I have.
Thank you very much, Lieutenant. Are there any questions from the council? Hearing none, then thank you very much, and we'll move on to our next. Yes, sir, Mayor. I forgot to unmute. Oh. I do have a question. I do have a question of the Navy. Go ahead. Does this increase the legal liabilities for the city in any way?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for the question. Answer to that question is no, not in any way that I can foresee. Essentially, the powers of the city would remain the same. It would simply open, or would grant additional powers to the Navy to prosecute crimes. That's really the only change that would happen here.
Okay. Thank you. I actually had one quick question. If an arrest is made on base that requires, you know, the arrestee to go to jail, would Seal Beach PD be involved in transport? Or would they be housed at our jail temporarily? Or would they be housed on the base?
Sir, in that way, the current configuration would remain the same. And my understanding is that for any non-military individuals who are detained on base, they would be transported to the Seal Beach facility. Unless that was changed via the memorandum of understanding, which would be a separate process, this shift in jurisdiction would have no impact on the current operations there.
Great. Thank you very much. Any other questions? All right, we'll move on to the next item, Oral Communication. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on any item not on the agenda unless authorized by law. No other business shall be considered. All email comments the city clerk received before the start of the meeting were distributed to City Council and made available to the public on the city's website. Email comments received after the start of the meeting will be forwarded to the City Council after the meeting. City Clerk, do we have any email comments?
No email comments were received.
Very good. Thank you. Next, City Attorney's Report. City Attorney Steele, do you have anything to report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Prior to the meeting this evening, the council met in closed session regarding the one item on the posted agenda. All council members were present, took a report from staff, but took no reportable action.
Thank you very much. City Manager Ingram, do you have anything to report this evening?
Thank you, Mayor. I have one item tonight. Wanted to take the opportunity tonight to thank our Community Development Director Les Johnson for his service to our community for the past year and a half. Unfortunately for us and for our community, Les has made the bittersweet decision after nearly thirty years of public service to retire and explore and enjoy the next well-deserved chapter of his life. His dedication to the council, to our executive team, to his staff team, to our community, to our businesses, and to our organization, especially during an ongoing pandemic, has had such a significant impact, and he will really be missed. Les, congratulations to you on behalf of our entire team and on behalf of the city on your retirement, and thank you for your service to our community, and we wish you the very best. At this time, I know that Les would like to say a few words as well. Les?
Thank you, City Manager Ingram. I want to start off by saying that it's been an absolute honor to serve as Community Development Director for the city of Seal Beach. This is a very special community, one that I'm thankful to have briefly been a part of, especially during the challenges that we faced over the past fifteen months or so. As I depart, I want to take a moment to thank a few people. I first would like to thank my staff. It's been a blessing to work with and be surrounded by an incredibly gifted and talented staff that cares deeply for this community and is more than willing to go the extra mile and exceed expectations on a regular basis. Calvin, Marco, Samuel, our Contract Building Inspector John, Tim, David, Anthony, Saul, and Liz. Thank you all for the hard work, efforts, and support that you have provided, not only to me, but to our department and this community. I would also like to acknowledge the executive staff. It's been a wonderful experience to come alongside and be a part of this amazing team. Kelly, Patrick, Steve, Craig, Gloria, Joe, Ron, and Phil. You are some of the best executives that I've had the privilege to work with. I'll certainly miss our weekly meetings, humorous moments, all too often at the expense of Joe, and mainly the care, compassion, and support that has been shown for one another as a team. And also, I'd like to thank our Environmental Quality Control Board and Planning Commission. It's been quite a challenge to get to know most of the commissioners via Zoom. The planning commissioners have been exceptionally flexible and adaptable over the past year or so. Most don't fully understand the time and effort our appointed officials put in in reviewing an enormous amount of documents and materials in order to make informed recommendations and decisions. I want to thank them for their support of not only me, but the Community Development Department, especially during the pandemic. I'd also like to thank Mayor Kalmy and the rest of City Council. You have all been very supportive of me and my staff. It's been an absolute honor and privilege to get to know each of you. I hope that I was of resource and assistance to you during my brief tenure here, as I certainly value and appreciate the time spent with each of you, and wish you all the very best going forward. And finally, I'd like to thank City Manager Ingram. Joe, though we both expect our time working together to be much longer than this, I very much value the time we spent together, your mentorship, your unwavering support of and belief, support of and belief in me, and most importantly, our friendship. Though I'm glad to be retiring from public service after more than twenty-eight years, I certainly have very mixed emotions about leaving Seal Beach. It has been a wonderful and very special place to work. But as a quote that Fred Rogers once said, "Often when you think you're at the end of something, you're at the beginning of something else." So with that, I look forward to the next chapter ahead, as I mindfully close out this one. Thank you again, everybody, and I'll hand it back to you, City Manager Ingram.
Thank you, Les, for that. And Mayor, that concludes my comments tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, general council members' comments and reporting pursuant to AB 1234. So do we have any council member comments? And we'll start with Councilmember Masalabet. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I only have my usual mosquito report. People may be noticing the advertising program that the vector control has ongoing. We've allowed some of their information to be posted in our bus stops. And they are taking on a very proactive role this season in terms of trying to keep the mosquito population down. It is anticipated this summer will be extremely difficult. And just a brief mention of the Orange County Sanitation District. They are moving ahead with some very large projects, and one of which I've kind of been tracking is all of the ramifications of the state's requirement for food recycling from restaurants and other people who provide food service. They can't put it in their trash anymore. They have to keep it separate, and then it goes to the sanitation district. And this doesn't happen for a while yet, but they are all working on and trying to come up with solutions and equipment needs to accomplish this environmental effort. And that's all I have. Thank you very much. Councilmember Moore?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I went to a recognition event dinner for the GRF last week. The leadership at Leisure World really did a tremendous job this past year handling all the issues related to the pandemic, and especially getting vaccines early in the year and coordinating a very high percentage of their population to get vaccinated. I think it's estimated to be over eighty percent vaccinated. And it was great to see many of the Leisure World leaders and friends again last week I hadn't seen in quite some time. I'd like to thank the city for getting the Senior Shuttle Program restarted in a few weeks, which will allow residents in Leisure World to not only go to restaurants and shopping in the main shopping centers, but also to Main Street to enjoy shopping and eating there. And also, thank you to Community Services for repaving the basketball court in Edison Park. Soon it will have lines for both basketball and pickleball for residents to enjoy. And last, I want to thank Les Johnson for the tough job over the past fifteen months. And good luck in his future endeavors. Really made our job less stressful, I believe, over the past year and having a fair, balanced, and professional approach to everyone involved. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Councilmember Sistarci.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd also like to thank Les Johnson for his help, work with our city for the last sixteen months. He hears from me constantly, a lot of times in regard to code enforcement, but I appreciate all his work and his help. I also like to thank Chief Goncheck for his sixteen months of COVID updates. I've appreciated those. I'd like to thank Public Works for a couple of I-405 calls this week, updates on the project as they're fully underway up there in District Four. I attended a memorial for Gordon Shanks yesterday. Thank you to the city for all their efforts putting that on for our former mayor and council member. I attended a Los Alamos Unified School District Working Group meeting that works with the city on some of our common issues. I attended a Regional Military Affairs Committee meeting. They announced the base will be having Fourth of July fireworks again this year. This event is going to be a drive-in event this year, and you would need to have reservations. So it's one, I'm told it's one ticket per car, and you should be able to get more information or sign up on the Los Alamos website. If not, contact Los Alamos Recreation if you're interested. We were also introduced to a couple members of the Women's Olympic, New Olympic Water Polo Team. Los Alamos, specifically the JFTB is the home of the team. And selected for the team is Seal Beach's own Rachel Fattell, who was on the winning two thousand and sixteen team. We also met Amanda Logan, who's a goalkeeper for the team. They will be off to Tokyo. They will be off to Tokyo on, I think it's the thirteenth of July and their first game is the twenty-fourth of July and we wish them good luck in for another win. They also announced that back this year will be the Pacific Air Show in coming again to Huntington Beach the first weekend in October. This year will be the Canadian Snowbirds and the Blue Angels will be performing. They will be staying at the Joint Forces Training Base while they're in town. The Joint Forces Training Base will hold a Commander's Open House on Thursday, September thirtieth, welcoming ceremony and meet the pilots and crews events. So that is all I have for my report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Shelley. Councilmember Vera Papa.
Yeah, thank you. Nothing to report tonight, but I did want to thank Les. I do appreciate your professional service and your availability and meeting you and getting to know you better and really walking the streets and just, you know, picking your brain and all the hard work you did. Good luck in your endeavors in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. And my comments will be brief. First, I also would like to add my congratulations and disappointment that we'll be losing Les, who I would say that while his tenure was short, his impact was tremendous on our city in terms of putting us on the right track in so many areas that the city is involved in now. And so, you know, we will miss you and we appreciate all of the things that you've done for us and all of the information that you were so willing to pass on to myself. It was quite an education. So thank you. I want to mention that the Fourth of July is coming up and you know, we've got to be careful. Our police department will be staffing accordingly and just don't, don't mess with illegal fireworks. Tell your kids and adults probably mostly. They can do so much damage and not only to property, but it's very bad for our pets. And we just need to just not, not have them here. And I think that, well, I did attend, I attended the ceremony, the open house for the, the new contract firefighting helicopters that courtesy of Southern California Edison. And they did a demonstration of their water dropping capacity. The, the average fire helicopter that you would see on the news, let's say the Orange County will carry approximately three hundred and sixty gallons of water. The helicopters from LA County generally can carry seven fifty up to a thousand, depending on their fuel load. The, the Shunik helicopters that we will have available to us carry three thousand gallons of water or retardant. So they can, they can certainly make a serious impact on a fire and hopefully keep it from, from getting too large a head start. So that was very interesting. And that would be my remarks for this evening. So, moving on, we have no council items tonight. And next is the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and are enacted by a simple motion with the exception of items removed by council members. So since there were no items removed, I'd like to have a motion and a second for the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second. Thank you. City Clerk Harper, would you please do the vote?
Mayor Kalmick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Vera Papa, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Sistarsik, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Masalavet, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. That passes five oh. Next is a public hearing for item G, which is a resolution adjusting the bidding threshold for public works contracts and adjusting the city manager's contract authority for acquisition of goods and services. So we will have a presentation by our Deputy Public Works Director, City Engineer Iris Lee.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, City Manager Ingram and members of the public. The item for consideration tonight is to confirm the city bidding threshold for public works contracts and to adjust the city manager's acquisition authority. Pursuant to section ten ten of the city charter, the city is annually adjust the public works contract bidding threshold based on that year's June Engineering News Record publication. Pursuant to City Council Resolution sixty-three eighty-four, the city manager's acquisition authority is bound to the bidding threshold adjustment. For example, if the public works contract bidding threshold increases by one dollar, the city manager's acquisition authority will also increase to one dollar. The comparison between June twenty-twenty's construction cost index with June twenty-twenty-one shows an increase of five point nine one percent. This translates to a bidding threshold adjustment and city manager's acquisition authority adjustment from thirty-four thousand four hundred seventy-six dollars to thirty-six thousand five hundred fourteen dollars. As you may have noticed, this increase is relatively higher compared to prior years and it is primarily attributed to price increase accorded. For construction commodities such as lumber, steel and concrete, we have seen a significant increase and it's likely due to the standard supply chain issues from the COVID- nineteen pandemic. We are hoping to see cost normalization in the latter half of twenty-twenty-one, but this may likely continue over the next few quarters. That will continue monitoring these trends and make recommendation as it best benefits the city. In conclusion, staff recommends adoption of Resolution seventy-one seventy-one to adjust the respective thresholds, allowing the city to maintain current weather inflation and overall pricing. This concludes my presentation and I'm available for questions.
Thank you very much, Iris. Do we have any council member questions? Okay, hearing none. I'll open the public hearing. And City Clerk confirming that we do not have any public members on the call wishing to speak.
That is correct. No one's on the call to speak.
Thank you very much. And I will close the public hearing and ask for any council questions one more time. Okay, hearing none. I'll call for a motion and a second, please. So moved. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Call on City Clerk for a vote by roll call.
Mayor Kalmick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Vera Papa, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Sistarsik, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote? Councilmember Masalavet, how do you vote?
Yes.
I just got a message from Councilmember Moore saying that he got disconnected, so. I guess we'll close the vote. Oh, we want to wait for him to come in. It'd be up to you, Mayor.
Let's give him a minute to come back in.
I'm muted. Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
That passes five oh. Thank you very much. Next is item H, which is a zone text amendment, which will amend portions of Title eleven of the Seal Beach Municipal Code regarding regulations for the placement of flags and flagpoles on residential property. I'll now call on for his last public act on the behalf of Seal Beach Community Director Les Johnson.
Honorable Mayor Council, actually Acting Senior Planner Barry Curtis will be providing the staff report for this item this evening.
Okay, then that will be your last introduction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Kalmick, members of the City Council, city staff, members of the public. As Les indicated, my name is Barry Curtis. Tonight, we have a zoning text amendment for your consideration. The proposed text amendment relates to standards for flags and flagpoles on residential properties within the city. Next slide, please Dana. I have a brief presentation that will include a background, an explanation of the proposed code revisions, the secret determination and recommended action. Next slide, please. As a background, the Seal Beach Municipal Code includes standards for the placement of flags on residential properties. In residential areas, flags are considered signs. They're limited to one flag per property frontage, not to exceed twelve square feet in area. And no commercial copy is permitted on those flags. I would note, though, that real estate signs are covered under a separate, separate section of the code. They're not considered under this. Next slide, please. This issue arose as a result of a code enforcement complaint regarding a home with two flags on one frontage. As a result of that code enforcement action, the Planning Division received a number of requests to reconsider the city's standards. Prior to doing that and developing recommended revisions, staff surveyed other cities in Orange County to determine whether common standards or best practices might exist. The results were included in the last page of the staff report. Basically, we found no real consensus from the cities that did respond. Of those that responded, we found the most common height that was allowed for a flagpole is thirty-five feet and that most cities that regulate flags allow more than one flag on residential properties. Next slide, please. After reviewing the existing standards and considering public comments, staff recommends the following revisions to flags and flagpoles on residential properties in the community. First, we recommend the creation of a definition of a flagpole, which is proposed to cover both in-ground poles and poles attached to a structure. At the recommendation of the Planning Commission, this would also apply to temporary flagpoles. Secondly, we'd recommend that the standards be revised to, one, create a maximum flagpole height of twenty-five feet, which would be consistent with residential height limits. And to remove the limit of one twelve-square-foot sign per frontage and instead allow two flagpoles on a residential property with a combined area for all flags of no more than forty square feet. Next slide, please. Staff has determined that the proposed text amendment is categorically exempt from secret review. Next slide. On June seventh, the Planning Commission considered this matter and voted five to zero to recommend its approval to the City Council. The commission recommended a couple of changes to the proposed standards. Those would be to allow two flagpoles for residential lots and to ensure that flags on temporary flagpoles are considered in determining the overall area of flags on a property. Those revisions suggested by the Planning Commission have been incorporated into the proposed ordinance that's before you this evening. Next slide, please. After conducting the public hearing, staff recommends that the City Council give first reading to the proposed ordinance sixteen eighty-nine by title only to approve Zone Text Amendment twenty-one dash two and to schedule the second reading of the ordinance for July twenty-sixth, the July twenty-sixth City Council meeting. Next slide, please. That concludes my prepared remarks. I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Barry. Any questions from the council?
I do. I have a couple.
Thank you.
Okay. I think that perhaps the Planning Commission was a little over enthusiastic about the number of poles to be allowed. I can't, for the life of me, understand why two flagpoles would be on someone's front lawn. If they have the pole that is coming out of their front porch, you know, with the single flag on it hanging down. I am, I would consider that not part of a flag on a flagpole, that it's separate. But I have a problem with the square footage that the Planning Commission agreed to. I think forty square feet is way too many square feet. Back in the day, those of you who are old like me would remember the guy in Long Beach. I think his name was Dempsey. He had this huge flag in his front yard and his neighbors were absolutely beside themselves because when the wind blew, and we know that does it every day, it made so much noise, they couldn't sleep at night. So I have a problem with the size, the overall size of flags being allowed and the number of poles. I think it should be one pole. And the typical size of an American flag, whatever, it was mentioned in the staff report and I've lost that right now, but you could tell me. And maybe one smaller sign behind, under it, MIA or, you know, something that you generally is a little smaller than the American flag. But those are my comments. I'm not happy with this at all. I think that it's way overdone, one flagpole, period, and limit the size of the, of the flags. That's what I have to say.
Thank you, Councilmember Masalavet. Any other council members have questions or comments?
Okay. I got one real fast.
Sure, go ahead.
Just again, can you go over the tip of the original ordinance? It was a twenty-square-foot flag allowable?
Mayor Pro Tem, currently it's one flag at twelve square feet.
Twelve square feet and what? And now we're going up to two flags at forty?
What we're recommending at this point, which came from the Planning Commission and staff, is two flagpoles, not necessarily limiting it to two flags. It could be a combination of, of larger and smaller flags, more than two, but forty square feet total.
So it was originally twelve square foot. I mean, the whole nexus of this was to add basically an additional flag on a flagpole. Am I correct?
Mayor Pro Tem, the concern that we had for the, the code enforcement complaint was regarding two flags on a flagpole. And the City Council, in this case, the city has pretty much complete discretion in this matter on, on what to allow. If you look at the slide that's up right now on the left, that's a standard fifteen-square-foot American flag and probably a twelve-square-foot military flag. So between those two, it's about twenty-seven square feet. This, this as proposed at forty square feet, it would potentially allow a third flag of that smaller size on there. Or as, as Councilmember Masalavet indicated, it could be a pole like this. I know that she was opposed to that, but it could be a pole like this as well as a pole such as in the center picture with it coming off of the building itself.
So like a, that's more like a sailing sailor's type situation, I guess, right?
The, the one on the right with the pendants, the nautical pendants, yes. And in the center, you'll see the flagpole coming off the front of the house. That, that's the other type of flagpole that would be considered.
Right. So, so what would be the square footage of the flagpole on the right?
The one on the right, it's probably very close to forty square feet of what you can see there. It's, it's hard to tell because I don't know how big that top flag is. It's, it's in a public place. It might be a large flag.
And are there any restrictions on where the flagpole could go? Because I kind of agree with Councilwoman Masalavet, if it's like next to a neighbor's bedroom, for example, on the, you know, on adjacent neighbor's, you know, household, it could be, you know, a nuisance of some sort, but is there any, any restrictions on exactly where it goes? is there any, any restrictions on exactly where it goes, or do they just have anywhere they can put it anywhere they want?
Mr. Mayor Potem, other than regular setback requirements, we didn't propose any additional setbacks or citing requirements for flags, but we could consider such if it was the desire of the council.
Well, I think it might not be too bad of an idea just to consider it, you know, and I think, I mean, if we have 12-foot, you know, 12-square-foot now, why wouldn't we go to 24 or maybe even 30-square-foot versus a 40-square-foot? I mean, I think we were just trying to add a situation where we can have two flagpole, two flags on a pole. You know, in a nutshell, that's what we're trying to obtain, if I wasn't not mistaken, but so, I mean, could it, could we lower the square footage? Would that affect it that much if we, if we did it so it would be two normal-sized flags on a pole, or how does that work?
Mr. Mayor Potem, as I indicated, the discretion is fully with the City Council, so you could absolutely lower the number. A standard-size American, residential American flag is 15 square feet. So if you wanted to allow, you know, maximum of two flags of that size, you could lower it from 40 square feet to 30 square feet, or any other number that seemed appropriate.
I mean, I think that would be a good idea if that covers the average size of a flag, because I think, you know, we don't want anything, you know, really big, you know, but I think we just want to give them the opportunity or the option to having two flags versus just one flag. And maybe with, you know, some type of setback, because you don't want to, you know, disturb your neighbor, so to speak, if it becomes an encumbrance of some sort.
I have another comment, too.
Yeah, go ahead.
When you're done, Mike, when you're done.
I'm good. I'm just open for suggestions on how we can obtain two flags on a pole and make it, you know, keep it simple, so to speak.
Yeah, well.
Go ahead.
How did we come up with two poles? That's a lot of flags. And how could, and the picture of the nautical pole is way too many. I mean, so the square footage might reach 40 square feet, but look at how many flags are on that. That's in front of someone's house, and those things are going to slap all night. And answer my question first about how you got from one pole to two poles.
Councilwoman Masalavet, we had originally recommended a single flagpole and the 40-square-feet. It's from staff. In discussions, the Planning Commission felt that it's possible someone may want to have a flagpole and as well as one on their coming off of the structure. And for that reason, they felt that if you're limited to 40 square feet or whatever square feet that ultimately gets decided on, how people put that up, whether it be on one flagpole or two, wouldn't really make a substantial difference. In their opinion, they wanted to give people that opportunity. It's absolutely the discretion of the council, whether you want to do one pole or two poles. Limit the square footage. You could limit the number of flags to two if that was the desire as well.
Well, like I said earlier, I, the middle picture, where the pole is sitting on the front porch like that, I don't have a problem with that at all, not one bit. But then, when you add 40 square, when you add even more square footage on a separate pole in the front yard, it's too much. It's, in my mind, it's too much square footage. Are you going, are they going to put up two American flags or one American flag and two other on the pole? You know, the combinations are, you know, go on and on. But I don't know. I, maybe, maybe I'm going to adjust my, my my comment to it's one pole, it's either on the porch, or it's one pole and it's in the lawn. There's only one pole allowed.
I would agree with you on that, too, but I would still like to figure out how would we word it so we have, we're allowing two normal-sized flags if they want to put that on a pole. Now, a quick question, is the middle picture considered a flagpole? If it's on your house like that?
Mayor Potem, we are, as proposed in the proposed definition of a flagpole, that would be a flagpole. So we wanted to cover both instances of the types of flagpoles we see. And if the interest, if the interest was to limit it to only two flags, we would change the standards to say no more than two flags. And if the desire was to have something like 30 square feet, so you could allow comparable size to two American flags, although I don't think anyone flies two American flags, we could limit the number of the area to 30 square feet total.
I would, I would like to propose that because I think that's, that was the goal of this whole amendment was to have the one flagpole on the left with the two flags, normal-sized flags. And, and if we can get it, you know, some type of offset in there, I think that would be, you know, a good idea, but I think the nautical flag and the 40-square-foot flag and the two flagpoles, is it really what we're looking to accomplish?
That's right.
I mean, so however you can word that, I would, you know, I think that would be more appropriate for what we're trying to obtain at this time.
I agree. To, to sort of review this, the code enforcement complaint came because someone was displaying two flags. And so the idea was to, in reviewing it, that if somebody, you know, wants to fly the American flag, which is always appropriate, but wants to celebrate their service in a, in a military, you know, Marine Corps, Navy, Army, whatever, or MIA, that we are now reconsidering to be able to find a way or to create a way that that would be okay. I, I think where, where the whole thing has kind of gone astray is that, especially during, you know, the recent political campaign, where people, you know, just had multiple flags, multiple flagpoles. And as recently as Memorial Day, there was a house in Old Town here that had four flagpoles and eight flags. And, you know, while you would not want to criticize necessarily any of the flags, you know, it, there's a point beyond which it is no longer appropriate, you know, for the neighborhood to have, have that many flagpoles. So and going back, the question, Barry, that the, the plan, was the Planning Commission's feeling, in, in your estimation, that they really wanted to kind of satisfy everybody's desire to fly flags, whether they be, you know, military, United States, California, and political flags?
Mr. Mayor, I think the Planning Commission was looking at their day-to-day experiences in their communities, and what kind of flags they see, and trying to take into account all possibilities they saw. I don't think they were necessarily thinking that people would have five or six flags up in 60, 40 square feet. But I do think absolutely they were thinking that people may have a federal and a state flag, or a federal and a military or an MIA flag, or some other flag of their choice that they felt like displaying.
Yes.
Go ahead, Mayor, I'm sorry.
Well, I was just going to say, my feeling is, while I, I lean toward one pole, two flags, depending on, of course, it depends on where, you know, I would not necessarily have heartburn if you had, were allowed to put up the 25-foot pole with two flags on it. And if you had a, you know, the, the normal flagpole that is mounted to the, you know, the eaves of the home, where people generally will display an American flag, you know, during a patriotic event, whether it's 4th of July or Memorial Day, or, you know, if they're a fan of a particular sport, that they would put up, you know, Rams, Chargers, SC, UCLA-type flag. But, but I, you know, I don't want to create another round of controversy. But, you know, I, I agree with Sandra and Mike that the, the cleanest is one flagpole, maximum of two flags. But I would be willing to entertain the idea that a secondary flagpole, which is the kind that's, you know, mounted to the building, that generally, you know, will have a, I don't know, maybe a 12-foot, 12-square-foot flag or less, that I might be able to support that.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a good idea, too, I think. But I wouldn't call the middle picture a flagpole, per se, quote unquote.
I agree.
So it could be worded differently, so it's not to be confused with two flagpoles. I mean, it could be, I don't know what the best description of that would be, but I, I would agree with you, Mayor Calmack, on that.
This is Tom. I was gonna suggest the same thing. Basically, we define a flagpole in the ground versus a flagpole, you know, off the house, and then, you know, limit one each, something like that.
Do you, do the other council members think it would be prudent to refer this back to the Planning Commission? For them to review what we're talking about and what our values are and?
No, no, because the nexus started with some complaints in, in the Hill and in Old Town, and I think we would know best, and we can kind of resolve this issue tonight, hopefully.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think.
Thank you. So how do we word, how do we word that? One, one pole in the ground, and one pole on the house, and two normal-sized flags, and one normal-sized flag on the, you know, on the house?
Yeah, well, I think, I think that, you know, personally, I've never heard of the flag that's mounted at an angle on the side of a house as a flagpole. I think that, for our definition at least, that a flagpole would be something that is vertically mounted in the ground and that, you know, couldn't exceed 25 feet and would allow two flags. I would go for two flags. That would be no greater, well, I, I, first of all, I don't think a secondary flag should be as large as the American flag. So if you have 15 feet, square feet for the American flag, that it would be, you know, perhaps 12 feet for any secondary flag. And that you could have a 12-square-foot flag mounted to an angled pole that attaches to the house.
Perhaps there needs to be a definition of flagpole.
Well, yes, that's, that's what I was saying. I mean, you know, an idea that comes to mind is you could call it, you know, the chair of a wall-mounted flag bracket. And the, the flag is already attached to the, what is, would be called a pole. So really, you could have a bracket, a bracket mounted wall-mount flag and a flagpole that would be mounted vertically, you know, in the ground.
Perhaps the city attorney could help us with that wording, you think?
Craig? I've been thinking about it, Mayor Potem. Trying to, trying to come up with something. I, I mean, I think the one we can all agree on is the, the, you know, one ground-mounted flagpole instead of, instead of the two that's in the language right now. So it'd be one ground, ground-mounted flagpole not to exceed 25 feet in height above grade. And what we're going to have to do is adjust the language. It says, "Flags may only just be displayed on a flagpole," because I think the discussion is to allow them to be displayed on the ground-mounted flagpole and also on something attached to the house. The problem I'm having is if we say you can attach a flagpole to the house and put a flag on it, I wouldn't want somebody to attach it to the roof. Right? I mean, we're, we're talking about, we're talking about something coming out from the side of the house. So I guess, I guess what I would suggest is that last sentence in Proposed Section 11.4.25.030A2, which is on page two of the ordinance, I think, I think we might there say that flags on poles mounted to the side of a home are up to, one, one flag may be displayed on a pole mounted to the side of the home in addition to the other two, and impose that 12-square-foot limit, so it's smaller. So you have, you have two at 15 square feet possible on the pole, which would be a max of 30, and then an additional flag, if somebody wants the Merry Christmas flag or the Happy 4th of July flag or something like some people do on the side of the house. So I think we could exclude in that last sentence flags on poles that are mounted to the side of a residence.
Yeah.
Mayor?
Yes.
I, I did listen to the Planning Commission meeting, and, and my, you know, I think they, they sort of did have a definition that was basically anything that had a flag on it was a flagpole. And they seem to be very interested in temporary flags, you know, the people that have a bunch of flags stuck in their lawn for various things, and were trying to kind of rein that in. So I think they gave them two to be able to put up a, you know, maybe sometimes even the ones that are, you know, I love dogs are in the, stuck in the front lawn, and then you've got one on the house on the bracket. So I think they were allowing a little bit more creativity or whatever, but trying to avoid having your whole lawn filled up with, with the flags. So I don't know. That was my, my kind of take on the Planning Commission meeting.
Oh, thank you.
Well, City Attorney Craig, I think if we can accurately describe the picture on the left and the picture in the middle, then, then we can, you know, agree.
Yeah.
Yeah, let me, let me, let me just make sure that I'm, that, because I want, I want the record to be clear that what we're talking about. I mean, if we said each site may contain, may contain no more than two flagpoles, comma, one ground-mounted not to exceed 25 feet in height above grade, and another attached to the side of the residence, then the next sentence would be, "Flags may only be displayed on a flagpole." So you'd be allowing the one on the left and the one on, in the center, but not two of the one on the left or two on the one in the center. It'd just be one of each is what you would potentially allow.
Yeah.
And then I, and then I think I heard, I mean, I guess the question then is, do you still want to reduce the cumulative area of all flags below 40 square feet? Because I think we heard two.
Or two.
Two at the 15 square feet.
Or each flag cannot exceed 15 square feet.
Well, I, I would not be in favor of a 15-square-foot flag mounted on an angled bracket on the house. I think that's, I think that's too big. So without getting buried in the weeds, I mean, if we, if we say that, and, and I actually, I wouldn't call a flag mounted on one of those brackets a flagpole.
Like, yeah, I would, yeah, the two flagpoles is kind of misleading.
Yeah, because it's really not, you know, a flag that you attach Yeah, cuz it, it's really not, it, you know, a flag that you attach to a bracket is not. Flag is not attached to a flag pole. It's attached to a piece of, uh, you know, to a, uh. What do you wanna call it? You know, a circular, uh, piece of wood. Or metal, but that is mounted to the wall. But it's a flag pole to me indicates is that you, you run the flag up the pole.
Yeah. Yeah, I would agree with that. So. How do you describe that?
Okay, so that's one, one flag pole then, ground mounted twenty-five, not to exceed twenty-five feet in height. And one additional flag. Displayed, displayed on the side of the house.
We'll call it a wall mounted flag that uh, mounts to an angled uh, bracket. Cuz that's what.
Yeah, although, although that's not necessarily, I mean, I think of the way I display my flag at home, which is on a straight. Attached to some hooks on the side of the house. So it's. Right? I think people, I think there are all kinds of different ways people might approach that. So I don't wanna be. I don't wanna create more code enforcement problems by being too specific.
Right.
Mister Mayor, maybe I could suggest um, for that definition is referring to the two types of poles is a ground mounted flag pole. And a wall mounted pole or wall mounted flag.
That's good.
I think it's wall mounted flag, Barry, is what we wanna say because it doesn't necessarily have to have a pole. It just has to be mounted to a wall.
Yep, understood.
Yeah.
Well.
And so then it would be two, two flags on the pole not to exceed. The fifteen square feet. And, and one.
Not to exceed twelve.
Not to exceed twelve.
I think that's reasonable. Um, you know, if somebody. You know, I, I doubt very much if somebody has a second flag on the pole. And because it's not necessarily a standard size, um, you know, military. Uh, flag or whatever, you know, no one's probably gonna be up there measuring. If it happened to be, you know, a, a little bit larger than that. But I think establishing the standard, I think would be, you know, would be a good idea.
And the wall mounted sign, wall mounted flag would not to exceed twelve square feet as well, correct?
Right. Does that uh? Work for everybody?
Yes, Mister Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Ma- Mister Mayor, uh, what if your wall mounted flag is an American flag that's fifteen square feet?
We're back in the weeds. I. I mean aesthetically. I find that overwhelming, you know, from a practical application. I guess if someone wants to, you know. Block their front door or a window with a larger flag. You know.
Well, could I ask the, could I ask the city attorney how big his flag is?
I'm sorry, I have, have it. It's the sta- I'm sure it's, I'm sure it's the three by five, uh, you know, the fifteen square foot size.
Okay.
Was that a standard size, three by five?
Yes, I framed many of them.
I guess the question is whether there's aesthetically, is there gonna be that much difference between twelve and fifteen?
Up to fifteen square foot, you know, period.
That, that's fine.
I mean, I don't know.
You know, if, uh, well, let's put it this way, I, you know, since we're not gonna be arbiters of good taste, then. I'm fine with, you know, not to exceed fifteen square feet for any of them.
Okay.
Uh, Mister Mayor, this is last site. Proposed language based on what you all have been describing. Uh, let me, let me read this out. This would be, uh, within the proposed ordinance under section eleven dot four. Dot twenty-five dot oh three oh A two. Reading as follows, flag slash flag poles. Each site may contain no more. Than one ground mounted flag pole not to exceed twenty-five feet in height above grade per frontage. Or excuse me, oh, great, is, is, scrap, uh, per frontage and. One wall mounted flag not to exceed fifteen square feet. The cumulative area of all flags on a property shall not exceed. Forty square feet in area. Or contain commercial copy. And then flags on temporary flag pole shall be included in the site's overall flag or a calculation. I'm not sure if that covers or captures what all you all were describing. I know the forty square feet was of question, but. That's what I was trying to type out while you all were talking about this.
Yeah, I mean, that seems. Reasonable.
So I'll just, just, um, to make sure we address everybody's comments. I, I was, uh, trying to address Councilmember Masalavits concerned that. Four, forty square feet or, you know, a, a large flag is a, is a problem. So I was thinking of limiting each flag to fifteen square feet to, to avoid that problem rather than the cumulative total. Now, that's totally up to the council, but I, that was what I was trying to do by saying, um, not to exceed fifteen square feet was, was address that concern.
Thank you, Craig.
Yeah, I think that's good too.
That's, yeah, I agree.
But we'd have an individual flag limit at fifteen square feet rather than the cumulative limit.
Right.
Yeah.
And a total of three flags. Do we need to state that or just the square footage would be self regulatory?
Uh, why I was gonna say not to exceed three flags of fifteen square foot fair, feet each.
Okay, great. Okay, any other? Comments on that?
Mister Mayor, there'd be one other change to the proposed ordinance and has to do with the, the definition of a flag pole. We had originally had the, the, the uh, affixed to the structure in that definition as well. So we would remove that portion. So it would just be. A staffer pole mounted in or to the ground on which one or more flags are or can be displayed.
Good. Okay, so I guess now we will, we'll open the public hearing. And city clerk, any of the members of the public that have rushed to the phones to uh, speak.
Oh, muted the whole meeting. Okay. There were no, there's no one on the call wishing to speak.
So, uh, I'll now close the public hearing and, um, are there any last uh, comments? By counselor staff? So then we would be. Calling for the question based on the modifications that we have agreed to with staff. Is that how we would handle this?
That's correct. You would uh, be seeking a motion to introduce the ordinance as, as has been amended here in the pu- during the public hearing. Um, wait for the reading and read by title only.
And that's what I'm doing.
You'll need, you'll need a motion in a second.
Yes, may I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
I moved.
Second.
Whatever.
We, we have a motion and a second. City clerk, Cat Harper, can we have the vote, please?
Mayor Kalmak, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Prokandvera Papa, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Sustarsic, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Masalavit, how do you vote?
Yes.
Passes five oh.
And we just need to read the title of the ordinance. It's ordinance one, six, eight, nine. An ordinance of the city of this, excuse me, an ordinance of the city of Seal Beach amending title eleven of the Seal Beach Municipal Code. Regarding regulations for the placement of flags and flag poles on residential properties. And finding the ordinance to be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act.
Thank you. So we have, uh, no unfinished or continued business. Under new business, uh, we'll now have an update on our local coastal plan. And we'll call upon. Community Development Director Johnson, perhaps?
Uh, thank you all, Mayor Councilmembers. Uh, this item is being brought before you this evening in order to provide a status update on the effort to establish a local coastal program here for the city of Seal Beach. And to also bring it to your attention, a few of the key review comments staff received from the coastal commission. As a result of reviewing the draft local coastal program land use plan. Uh, as you are all aware, this effort has been quite a lengthy process. Uh, the draft local coastal, uh, program land use plan was completed approximately a year and a half ago. Uh, the plan was sent over to the coastal commission for review. A number of review comments were subsequently forwarded to the city for our consideration. Uh, the comments have been reviewed and most have been or in process of being addressed. However, there are a few. Uh, that questioned or comments, excuse me, that we believe warranted bringing them to your attention, uh, resulting in the presentation this evening. Michael Baker and National has been the team administering, uh, this process for the city and establishing our local coastal program. So at this time, I would like to introduce to you Noel Steele and Chris Johnson from Michael Baker. Uh, Noel and Chris have a presentation for you this evening that will cover the key review comments that we've received. And with that, I'll turn it over to you, Noel and Chris.
Yes, hello. Good evening. Can everybody hear me okay? The volume?
Yes.
Okay, yes. Good evening, city council members, uh, Mayor Kalmak and City Manager Ingram. My name is Chris Johnson. I am the project manager for. Uh, the local coastal program, uh, with Michael Baker. So. Tonight, we're gonna be talking about a few items as, uh, Community Development Director Johnson mentioned. Uh, next slide, please. So just a quick update for, uh, folks on the call. Again, we're, we are in the process of, uh, updating the local coastal program for the city. Uh, real quickly, uh, the local coastal plan, uh, program rather, uh, consists of two elements. One is the land use plan. Uh, and the local implementation plan is the other. Those two, uh, those two portions of the document. Qualify for the local coastal program, the overall local coastal program. And what does it do? It guides development in the coastal zone, uh, once the LCP is certified by the California Coastal Commission. The background on this is that the city was awarded a grant funding by the coastal commission to complete this LCP and that's where we are in the process. So we have. Completed the land use plan portion, uh, for the most part. Uh, under a previous contract with the city and worked through, uh, the, the document with California Coast Commission and city staff. As Community Development Director Johnson mentioned, there are a few items that have surfaced, uh, out of those conversations that warranted further discussion. Uh, with you all on the call tonight. What are the benefits of the local coastal program? Uh, the local coastal program itself will, will provide permit issuance authority. Uh, within the coastal zone to the city. It'd be delegated to you all as opposed to having individuals. Uh, approach the coastal commission for individual coastal development permits. So, uh, as we, as we've mentioned before, the city would control the local decision making, uh, in accordance with the coastal act. Once the LCP is certified. Uh, the, one of the benefits there too is that the, the permit process, processing again would be streamlined at the local level. Uh, instead of the, you know, the delays that one often experiences, uh, taking individual permit through the coastal commission process. Next slide, please. So here's a quick update on, on some of the milestones that have, um, passed and, and others that we are, uh, and, and, and others that are bringing us to the current. Uh, juncture that we're at now in the process. So. As Community Development Director Johnson mentioned, the city has submitted the LUP to the coastal commission, uh, in December of twenty nineteen. Uh, we've been going through a process with the California Coastal Commission of addressing their comments both in March and June of twenty twenty. As it was mentioned, the majority of the comments, uh, have been incorporated into the document. Uh, with the exception of the, of the comments on, on the next few slides. So I think what we're looking, uh, to do tonight is, is discuss a few of those. There's not many. Uh, we'll try to streamline those as best as possible. And, um, I don't know that we will get to a point tonight where we'll be looking to, to solve, solve the questions. They may require. Uh, further discussion internally with, with city staff, but, uh, we wanted to bring several to your attention. Next slide, please. There's a lot on this slide, but essentially, uh, I'm going to assume that, um, city council and others had an opportunity to. Review some of the comments, uh, today prior to the meeting. I won't read all this, but effectively, uh, some of the comments are gonna be. Uh, for the most part, just a, an issue of disclosure. So we're gonna be bringing forward a few comments. Um, that are pretty standardized language for local coastal programs and that. Other cities within the coastal zone of Southern California and other parts of California in general are also, uh, seen incorporated into their. LCP documents. Uh, so this first one is, is effectively dealing with shoreline, um, protection and that would be. Uh, hardlining the, uh, the coast, armoring the coast with, uh, with items such as, uh, riprap, large rock. Reventments or seawalls, which, which would be considered hard armoring. And, and what the coastal commission, uh, is proceeding to do in that instance is this, um. Discourage the use of those various types of hard armoring mechanisms, um, for different reasons. And so. This particular item here deals with the safety, uh, of using those items. And so the policy that was developed. Up top is one that, uh, Michael Baker in coordination with city staff had developed. Uh, and what we had received back was just some additional language. Uh, regarding the use of shoreline protective devices, although they're discouraged, they can be used. Uh, but there, uh, there will be certain instances where the use of those. Uh, devices will be discouraged if they do certain things, for example. Uh, like substantially alter natural landforms, bluffs. And, uh, contribute to erosion, geologic instability. Um, or destruction of the site itself or the surrounding area. So. This is pretty standardized language again, uh, language that we're seeing in most local coastal programs. Um, so there's nothing necessarily, uh, here that's alarming. It's pretty standardized.
If I could, oh, if I could jump in real quick to Chris, um, and just to further iterate the point that, uh, a lot of this language is fairly standardized. Obviously, your consultancy, myself and Chris, were aware that there's no bluffs in Seal Beach. Um, so this is just standard, standard coastal commission language that they've requested. Addition, uh, addition into your LCP.
Right, thanks.
No worries.
Next slide, please. Uh, these, this is another continuation of the same site, type of comment that we received, uh, just prior to this one and discussed. Where, uh, the coastal commission is prohibiting the use of shoreline protective devices. And it's specific to new development, uh, as well as redevelopment. So those, those types of proj- uh, properties. Uh, or structure, structures that would, um, that would be. Uh, exposed to risk and hazard from sea level rise, uh, have to go through a series of. Uh, of demonstratable, uh, conditions, uh, that would suggest that the use of those types of materials would be appropriate. But in the local coastal programs that we're seeing and it's, it's not new language, the coastal commission is prohibiting use of those. Uh, hardline armoring devices. So this is typical language again. Um, nothing, nothing of a surprise here. Uh, if, if someone applied for a coastal development permit to protect their property. Uh, and was proposing hard, uh, hardline armoring of their, of their property, uh, for protection. Um, that would be discouraged, uh, not only at the local coastal program level, but if someone went directly to the California Coastal Commission for that type of, uh. Allowance, they would also be, um, not typically not permitted from you. Taking that approach for again, uh, new development and redevelopment of projects that are supposed to that type of hazard. Okay, next slide. This comment here is, is similar in nature. Uh, what we're dealing with here is that. They are also prohibiting land divisions where we're dealing with lot divisions, uh, lot splits, lot line adjustments of. That would be subject to the same types of hazards for new beef, and will create new beef from beachfront lots, excuse me. Um, so it's very typical language, uh, that we're seeing, um, in, in a lot of the coastal programs. Today, and this would be consistent with the last two comments to deal with. Hardline armoring of the, of the shoreline, uh, either to protect an existing, um, structure, uh, new development. Or, or, or looking to divide a property, uh, to incorporate lot splits, lot line adjustments and things like that. So very typical language. Nothing unique to Seal Beach, but we're a language that we're seeing in local coastal programs and also is a function of. The coastal commission's guidance on sea level rise updates from 2015 and 2018. So very standardized language. Next slide, please. And for this slide, I think I'll turn it over to Noel to talk a little bit about. Comment number three. This is where this is more than just a kind of. Generic boilerplate type of comment that we're getting in the local coastal programs. This one is specific to. The city of Seal Beach and warrants further discussion among city staff. So I'll go ahead and turn that over to Noel.
Definitely. Thanks, Chris. As you can see in this comment, the the comment is less of a policy addition and more of. You know, generalized thoughts from the coastal commission. In your LCP, we did note that the Surfside Colony. Has existed for a new, you know, numerous years. Is private property and new development does not. Substantially change the the nature of the community. You know, they're obviously limited by space and whatnot, so they're not growing. They're they're growing within the existing footprint that they have. However, coastal commission did ask for. A policy to be incorporated to plan for expansion where feasible for public access in the surf side area. And challenges the redevelopment consistency with the coastal act policy. Like Chris was saying, this. Public access is an item of coastal commission concern. However, this community. Does have the legal property right to be private and they are the owners of significant portion of the sandy beach in this area. So implementing a policy like this may not. May not be feasible. And you know, there may be desires for a policy like this to not be incorporated in the LCP. At the end of this presentation, we would welcome thoughts and. Opinions from from council and any other staff on the call who who may. Have ideas on how this should be best addressed. Was there anything else you wanted to add, Chris, before we go to the next slide?
Yep, I think that's good.
Awesome. All right. The next slide, please. This comment is again, not policy language edition, but a thought from coastal commission on visitor accommodations. Coastal commission, similar to public access, they are concerned about low cost visitor serving accommodations. And as the city of Seal Beach only has a few hotels in the area, they are asking for. They're asking for the availability of short term rentals as home sharing. You know, we're we're well aware that. Again, short term rentals in the city most likely would not be lower cost accommodations, but they would. Increase the ability of the city to show. A diverse accommodation stock essentially. We know that the city's approach in the past about regulator or regulating the the short term rentals has been to halt. New permits for that and some things that we had heard from from Les and then City Manager Joe Ingram. That there may be interested in reopening this this program in the future. So. We have details of of our method to determine the low, moderate and high cost accommodations of the majority of accommodations in your city. Using this method are indicated as moderate. So depending on the approach that the city is willing to take with short term rentals. We can craft our response accordingly, not to say that we have to have short term rentals as a form of. Visitor serving accommodations to open up, but if it was to open up, we would. Bring this to coastal commission and address it as such. And then we can go to the next slide. I think this is our last policy concern. This is just about parking. Like getting back to what I was saying about the public access, parking is. An extension of that concern from the coastal commission. Seen in the comment, the the city's preferential parking zones have been. In existence prior to the coastal acts. The coastal act even being enacted in the California. The metered parking in Old Town was established under an approved CDP and that is included in your LCP. And so this is just we would comment vaguely getting to the the ongoing parking. Parking solutions that the city has been pursuing in terms of trying to raise the cost for daily parking. And I know that that is a separate process with a separate CDP and other approval process with the coastal commission. But just to bring to everyone's attention that the the coastal commission is looking at parking in terms of a public access concern with the city. And we would, however. I guess the approach that I would recommend taking in terms of addressing this comment is just to outline where you are in the process with. The other CDP in terms of trying to raise the parking in other parking lots in the city. There's lots of ground to stand on in terms of Seal Beach has free parking in many parts of the city, which allows for the appropriate public access needed. So. Again, not not a big concern. This happens in most of the cities and parking in beach cities is just challenging in general. So. That is what is what the coastal commission's concern is on this item. And with that, Chris and I are available to answer any further questions on any of the policies. Or any of the coastal commission policy comments. And we would like to solicit any input that you have, you know, our next step would be to go back to coastal commission with basically. Any thoughts that we've gathered in this meeting and any thoughts that we've gathered in previous meetings with city staff. So we're looking forward to. To chatting with everyone. If there's any questions or anything we can further elaborate on.
Okay, well, thank you. Do we have any council member comments? We'll start with Sandra.
Well, I. I'm not the right one to come to. I have. I have always had issues with the coastal commission. In my professional career. And now as a council member in a beach city. I just, I think maybe. I am way too stilted. In my attitude. So maybe you should go over to someone else. And I'll come in later on.
That would be fine.
After I calm down.
I understand. Councilman Moore.
I I'd just like to understand a little bit more about. How we would go back to coastal with. Would we push back a little bit on what is best for the city? How does that work in negotiating kind of? How this would turn out?
Yeah, this is, this is Chris. I can kind of jump at that one real quick. So yeah, absolutely. It's a, I mean, a lot of these items are negotiate negotiated items, I think several of the first few that were upfront are really not because those are those are guide. That's guidance and typical direction from the coastal commission regarding. Items like shoreline protection and how it is that. New development redevelopment are addressed. So those are pretty standardized and typical, as I would say, as far as the parking is concerned and the low cost. You know, you know. Visiting. And also. How those items are addressed, you know, we would go back and and request a meeting with coastal staff and then obviously go in with. You know, fully vetted. And discussed and a discussed approach internally first and then. Put that before coastal commission, the the items of surf side. Access and things like that have long been something I think that coastal commission hasn't been interested in. But that, you know, there's not necessarily a nexus to doing that, given its current. Configuration. So. On those particular items, I think to answer your question, yes, I think there there should be an opportunity here, and I didn't expect that we would be able to do this all tonight. I think it was more of just a presentation of the few comments that we've been. Receiving and that warrant further discussion internally. But that, yes, absolutely, there needs to be a a response and a narrative developed. Many of these items are items that the city has to. You know, bring forward and and are ones that need to be addressed specifically by the city and as opposed to the consultant where they're to guide that, but these are these are city issues. But there is a negotiation. Yeah.
What is our current restrictions for short term rentals? Is that by a certain amount or?
I would turn that over to Les. From my understanding, the the short term rental permits had been capped and they were no longer accepting new ones. But I I can kick that back to Les if you're available.
Yeah, Honorable Mayor Council members, we currently do not allow short term rentals in the city. When that provision was put in place a few years back, there were sixteen. Short term vacation rentals that are grandfathered in. Those are allowed to to exist. But there are new, no new short term rentals allowed within the city.
Okay, and coastal is kind of pushing the city to allow more of that. Is that correct?
They are, but at the same time, they cannot mandate that. It's a request that they're entitled to make. You know, their desire is to expand public access and expanding. Lower cost visitor serving accommodations. You know, part of their approach is that they believe that. Short term rentals are a solution to that issue. But again, they can't make. The city reopen short term rental permit applications if the city does not want to do that.
Right. And actually.
I just. Go ahead, Tom.
Oh, I I just, I think I'd need some time to kind of read through this and and then provide some feedback at a later time. But thank you.
Just to comment on that. We, of course, are going to be adding. A few anyway. Visitors serving accommodations as part of the development of the. The First Street. Shea Homes development. There will be. There have been lots set aside for the development of visitor serving accommodations. So. I mean, we can at least make a a token. Offer there.
Yes, and that has been an update since when we submitted the LUP. So we would definitely include that in our. In our resubmital to coastal to further bolster the city's stock.
Great. Councilmember Verapapa.
No, I have no comments or questions at this time. Thank you so much.
Sure. Councilmember Sastaric.
Um, I was also going to ask about the status of those visitors serving parcels because I know they exist, but. It doesn't seem like there's been any movement on that. So. And these I could, I would also ask for more time. These questions were from 2020? These, these comments are from March and June of 2020?
Yes, the comments were received last year. Yes, and Michael Baker has incorporated all of the other. Comments received and these are. The outstanding items.
Okay, so if we took a little bit more time, that would be okay?
Oh, yes, we're happy to allow the proper time for for council review.
Okay, all right. That's that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. I will. I'll reserve my comments for the moment, I think. Councilwoman Masalavat, have you calmed down enough to want to speak?
Well. I have calmed down. But I. I'd like to take a look at these really closely and then ask questions of. Michael Baker and. Perhaps get some clarification to issues. In terms of how we can deal with the policies that we're going to have to present to them. It's just. You know, coastal commission was created. For a wonderful purpose, but I'm afraid through the years that. It's gotten ahead of itself. Anyway, I I would like to wait. And have some sort of maybe a working session. With the rest of the council. And Michael Baker people. To talk these things over. I don't know how anyone else feels about that.
Anyone else? How do you feel?
That sounds reasonable to me.
Sounds fine to me.
I would, you too, Mike?
Yeah, fine.
I I would agree. I, you know, I think that. You know, to be able to. Respond to them in a. At least what appears to be a non threatening manner. Is probably the best tact here. You know, the actions of the coastal commission. You know, seem to come from a position of. It's their decision. And you can appeal, but generally speaking. They operate with some impunity. So we want to be careful that we don't. Cause more problems for ourselves. But I think that if. You know, if our consultants are saying that there is room for negotiation with the meaning that they will listen to. And and give some credence to counter arguments that we might make with regard to our ability to conform. To all of their their wishlist items that we might be able to. You know, to come out of this. With a local coastal plan that would certainly. Save us and our residents a great deal of of time and money. To be able to get their remodels and new new homes built and and anything else. You know, that's that is taking so long right now to do.
And and one, one thing I would add to that, this is Chris Johnson. Is on the few items where they're they're talking about parking, for example, and also the visitor serving accommodations. I think. Those are, those are all items that can be negotiated. And aside from the ones that are just kind of standardized boilerplate comments. The one item regarding surf side. It's problematic in several ways. Being being situated the way that it is and having the ownership, the way that it is, is that oftentimes and folks on the call may be. Familiar with it, but there are areas of deferred certification. So if there is a situation where. An agreement can't be reached with regards to what's being asked. Let's say that community in particular with regards to an easement and parking and things like that in the community. That Eric there can end up being an area of deferred certification in which that community for anything that they would need to do. Relative to needing a permit would have to still apply to the California Coastal Commission and not through. The city of Seal Beach. So that's, that's also an option there.
Right. And I think there has been some historical animosity. In that situation because Surfside sued the coastal commission years ago and won. So whatever the, I don't remember what the issue is. I did have one other question and. Have have the discussions that you've had with coastal. Have they alluded more than once to the fact that we don't have a permit to build a berm every year? Which is changing the landscape, although on a temporary basis. Is building something to prevent coastal flooding.
Yes, it it that actually that item did come up and we can provide you. With with that particular comment, but I believe that the. Coastal Commission was referencing it and said that presently there's not a permit for that. And if that particular action wants to get rolled into the. Local coastal program that a that it did it for a continued operation and continual thing that it would need to be rolled into the local coastal program and permitted. That was basically the extent of it and summarizing that, but we could get you that exact language for you to review.
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
I was just going to say their only request was to, yes, and to add and to permit it properly and that there are options to. Permit it on a several year basis. So you don't have to submit a permit every year. You could. Permit a program. Chris probably has more experience than I do, but you know, five, 10 years potentially. To say, just so you don't have to go back every single year and apply for it.
That's very important. I mean, because sometimes. You know, the availability of the heavy equipment and timing and everything else can be very important as to when we. Excuse me, when we do build the berm. So and I, you know, having a situation with a longer term. Permit would certainly help.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay. Any last minute comments? All right, then this item then has been received and filed and we will. Hopefully be able to. and we will hopefully be able to meet at a date forward to have another discussion between the council and staff and Michael Baker International to look at some, you know, what might be other alternatives or other responses so that we can get this, the LCP in place. All right, so now we come finally to adjournment. And I will now adjourn the City Council to Monday, July 26, 2021. The July 12, 2021 meeting has been canceled. So that will, that'll be July 26 at 5:30 PM to meet in closed session if deemed necessary. So with that, thank you everyone for your attendance and patience and we will see you on the 26th. Thank you.